Hello and welcome to study session number twenty-two of daily memory lab. And in today's study session, we will be doing our first round five. So we'll be going back to E-way bill chapter, the first round fifth revision that we are going to do. So the first eight pages we will see in that round five revision and then we will see. Supply of GST, supply under GST from page number forty-three to fifty-two. And then we will go through round three of what we studied yesterday, page number twenty-eight to thirty-three. And then again, depending on the time availability, we will probably read another five to six pages probably from thirty-four to. Thirty-nine or forty, something like that. So let us start with E-way bill, round five revision. Till page number eight, okay. So this portion has been given further in the chapter, so we will directly start from here. Common portal, relevant definitions, common portal. Okay, before that I almost forgot, yesterday I forgot, let us set the intention and then we will continue. Pre-study session intention, now I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection. My goal is only to make a tiny progress in the next thirty-two sixty minutes. Okay. Let's get back to E-way bill, common portal. Common portal means the common goods and service tax electronic portal referred to in section one forty-six, section two clause twenty-six. Taxable supply means a supply of goods or services or both which is levyable to tax under this act. Place of business includes a place from where the business is ordinarily carried on and includes a warehouse, go down. Or any other place where a taxable person stores his goods, supplies or receives goods or services or both. A place where a taxable person maintains his books of account or a place where a taxable person is engaged in business. Through an agent by whatever name called. Taxable person means a person who is registered or liable to be registered under section twenty-two or twenty-four. Principal place of business means the place of business as specific. That means the place of business specified as the principal place of business in this certificate of registration. Proper officer in relation to any function to be performed under this act means the commissioner. Or the officer of central tax who is assigned that function by the commissioner in the board, section two clause ninety-one. Registered person means a person who is registered under section twenty-five but does not include a person having a unique identity number. Tax period means the period for which the return is required to be furnished. Document includes written or printed record of any sort. And electronic record as defined in clause T of section two of the Information Technology Act two thousand. Voucher means an instrument where there is an obligation to accept it as consideration or part consideration. For a supply of goods or services or both and where the goods or services are both to be supplied. Or the identities of their potential suppliers are either indicated on the instrument itself. Or in related documentation including the terms and conditions of use of such instrument, section two clause one-one-eight. Convenance includes a vessel, an aircraft and a vehicle. E-way bill, section sixty-eight, read with relevant CGST rules. Under GST regime, for quick and easy movement of goods across India without any hindrance, all the checkpoints across the country are abolished. However, in order to monitor the movement of goods for controlling any tax evasion, E-way bill system has been introduced. Under this system, a taxpayer prior to movement of goods via a conveyance. Would inform each transaction details to the tax department, obtain an acknowledgement number. For having thus informed and then use this acknowledgement number as a valid document accompanying the conveyance carrying goods. The idea is that the taxpayer may be, uh, the taxpayer be made. To upload the details of each transaction to a common portal through the internet and once uploaded. The common portal would automatically generate a document which can be tracked and verified easily by any stakeholder. Statutory requirement, section sixty-eight stipulates. That the government may require the person in charge of a conveyance. Carrying any consignment of goods of value exceeding such amount as may be specified. To carry with him such documents and such devices as may be prescribed. Rule one thirty-eight prescribes E-way bill as the document to be carried for consignment of goods in certain specific prescribed cases. What is E-way bill? A waybill is a receipt or a document issued by a carrier, giving details and instructions relating to. The shipment of a consignment of goods and the details include. Name of the consignor, consignee, point of origin of the consignment and its destination and route. E-way bill is a compliance mechanism wherein by way of a digital interface, the person causing the movement of goods. Uploads the relevant information prior to the commencement of movement of goods and generates E-way bill on the GST portal. In other words, E-way bill is an electronic document generated on the GST portal evidencing the movement of goods. What are the benefits of E-way bill? Following are the benefits of the E-way bill mechanism. Physical interface to pay away for digital interface resulting in elimination of state boundary checkposts. It will facilitate faster movement of goods. It will improve the turnaround time of trucks and help the logistics industry by increasing the average distances traveled. Reducing the travel time as well as costs. E-way bill generated is electronically in the form of, in the form GST EWB one on the common portal. E-way bill can be generated through various modes like web, Android app, SMS. Using bulk upload tool and API based on site-to-site integration, et cetera. The facility of generation, cancellation and update of, update and assignment of E-way bill is available to the supplier, recipient. And the transporter as the case may be. The prerequisite for generation of E-way bill is that. The person who generates E-way bill should be a registered person on the GST portal and he should register on the E-way bill. Portal using his GST IN. If the transporter is generating the E-way bill but he is not registered under GST law. It is mandatory for him to get enrolled on the E-way bill portal before generation of the E-way bill to get. A fifteen-digit unique transporter ID called trans-IN. Trans-IN or transporter ID is a unique number generated by the EWB system for unregistered transporter. Once he enrolls on the system which is similar to GST IN format and is based on state code. Pan and check some digit. This trans-in or transporter ID can be shared by transporter with his clients. Who may enter this number while generating E-way bills for assigning goods to him for transportation. E-way bill provisions as contained in rule one thirty-eight A, one thirty-eight, one thirty-eight A, B, C, D and E. Chapter sixteen are elaborated as under. When is E-way bill required to be generated? Rule one thirty-eight, sub-rule one. Whenever there is a movement of goods of consignment value exceeding fifty thousand in relation to a supply or for reasons other than supply. Or due to inward supply from an unregistered person. Then the registered person who causes such movement of goods shall furnish the information relating to. The said goods as specified in party of form GST EWB zero-one before commencement of such moment. It is important to note that information is to be furnished prior to the commencement of movement of goods and is to be issued. Whether the movement is in relation to a supply or for reasons other than supply. Who causes movement of goods? If a supplier is registered and undertakes to transport the goods, movement of goods is caused by the supplier. If a recipient arranges transport, movement is caused by him. If goods are supplied by an unregistered supplier to a registered recipient, movement shall set to be caused by such recipient. It is if the recipient is known at the time, time of commencement of movement of goods. Okay, meaning of consignment value of goods. Consignment value of goods shall be the value determined in accordance with the provisions of section fifteen. Declared in an invoice, a bill of supply or a delivery chalan as the case may be. Issued in respect of the set consignment and also includes the central tax, state or union territory tax. And integrated tax and says charged if any in the document and shall exclude the value of exempt supply of goods. Where the invoice is issued in respect of both exempt and taxable supply of goods. As discussed earlier in this chapter, in case of movement of goods for reasons other than supply. The movement is occasioned by means of a delivery chalan which has to necessarily contain the value of goods. The value given in the delivery chalan should be adopted in the E-way bill. Banu Pratap shoe manufacturer is registered in Punjab, sold shoes to a retail seller in Gujarat at a value of forty-eight thousand. Excluding GST at eighteen percentage and wants to send the consignment of such shoes to Gujarat. The consignment value will be for fifty-six thousand six forty because of inclusion of GST. Since the movement of goods is in relation to supply of goods and consignment value exceeds fifty thousand. E-way bill is mandatorily required to be issued in this given case. Special situation where E-way bill needs to be issued even if the value of consignment is less than fifty thousand. Interstate transfer of handicraft goods by a person exempted from obtaining registration. Where handicraft goods are transported from one state or unit territory to another state or unit territory by a person who has been exempted. From the requirement of obtaining registration under classes one and two of section twenty-four. That E-way bill shall be generated by the said person irrespective of the value of consignment forth proviso to rule one thirty-eight. Handicraft goods are the goods specified in notification number fifty-six of two thousand eighteen. Data thirty-three ten two thousand eighteen which exempts the casual taxable persons making interstate taxable supplies such. Of such handicraft goods from obtaining registration up to specified turn number limit. Okay, so we have completed the first segment of today's study session, which is we have completed round five of. This chapter, first eight pages of this chapter as well. Now let us go to supply under GST. Importation of services para four of schedule one. Import of services by a person from a related person or from his establishments located outside India. Without consideration in the course or furtherance of business shall be treated as supply. Jumru Associates received illegal consultancy services from its head office located in Malaysia. The head office has rendered such consultancy services free of cost to its branch office. Jumro associates and the head office or related persons, services received by Jumro associates will qualify as supply. Even though the head office has not charged anything from it. Chakmak a proprietor registered in Delhi has sought architect services from his son located in the US. With respect to his newly constructed house in Delhi. Although services have been received by Chakmak without consideration from his son, a related person. It will not qualify as supply since the same has not been received in the course or furtherance of business. Okay, now importation of service with consideration is compulsorily supply whether you receive it in the course or furtherance of business or not. But if it is without consideration, if it is in the course or furtherance of business, it is supply. If it is for, not for the purpose of business, it is not a supply. In the preceding paragraphs, we have discussed the provisions of schedule one. Which enumerates the cases where an activity is treated as supply even though it is undertaken free of cost. In this backdrop, let us examine whether the items given free of cost. In case of some of the sales promotion schemes qualify as supply or not. A number of sales promotion schemes are commonly employed by businesses to increase sales volume. Or to encourage the use or trial of a product or service so that new customers get attracted towards their product. For instance, certain sections of trade and industry such as pharmaceutical companies often provide drug samples to their stockists. Dealers, medical practitioners, et cetera. Sometimes come or come or sometimes companies announce offers like buy one get one free. That is buy one soap and get one soap for free or get one toothbrush free along with the purchase of toothpaste. As we have seen that, as we have already seen that as per section seven subsection one clause A, the goods or services which are supplied free of cost. Without any consideration shall not be treated as supply except in case of activities mentioned in schedule one. In view of the same few sales promotion schemes have been examined as under free samples and gifts. Samples which are supplied free of cost without any consideration. Do not qualify as supply under GST except or the activity falls within the ambit of schedule one. Buy one, get one free offer. It may appear at first glance that in case of offers like buy one, get one free. One item is being supplied free of cost without any consideration. In fact, it is not an individual supply of free goods but a case of two or more individual supplies. Where the single price is being charged for the entire supply. It can at best be treated as supply of. Two goods for the price of one. Taxability of such supply will be dependent upon as to whether the supply is a composite supply. Or a mixer supply and the date of tax shall be determined accordingly. Discuss the detail subsequently in this chapter. Mister Venkates hired a professional firm based in UK to receive their legal consultancy service for his family dispute. So it is not for the purpose of business. The service received by Mister Venkates will be. In case of service received by Venkates, okay, free of cost and then for a consideration of thousand dollars. If first one is free of cost, then it is not, do not appoint to supply. Second one is for thousand dollars, so it doesn't matter whether you do it for business or for purpose other than business, then it will be. The chargeable to tax, okay. There has always been an ambiguity as to whether activities or transactions involving supply of goods. Or services by any person other than individual to its members or VC versa fall within the purview of GST or not. Clause A to section seven subsection one brings uncertainty that certain said activities are covered within the scope, okay. I am just rushing through this part, okay. So this we have read quite a bit of times and this particular sub-segment is pretty. Uh, what to say, pretty limited only. It's not like we have to read this and. Let's say there is an association and association has members. And that association does a certain service to its members or its constituents for a consideration. In that situation, it will be treated as the association and the, um, association and the members are treated as two separate people. And that is actually a taxable flow of supply. So I'll just read this example directly. Resident welfare association of Sanskriti society supplies air conditioners to its members at a concessional price. A resident welfare association collects maintenance charges from its members for services provided. Provided in the both of four set examples, it shall be deemed that resident welfare association and its members are two separate persons, you see. Two separate persons and it shall be deemed that the supply has taken between the association and its members. One more example I can tell you from memory is, we have read it somewhere else in this chapter is that. The resident welfare association would have paid the electronic electricity bill for its members for a nominal charge. So that nominal charge will be deemed as concentration and that entire transaction will be deemed as supply. Okay, activities or transactions to be treated as supply of goods or supply of services. Seven, one A, subsection one A classifies certain activities. A transaction constituting supply either as supply of goods or supply of services. Schedule two to the CGST act contains the list of activities or transaction which have been classified either as supply of goods or supply of service. This helps in mitigating the ambiguities which existed in earlier laws. Under earlier tax regime, the restaurants used to charge both service tax and VAT on the food served. This is so because the sale of goods and provision of service were involved. And therefore taxable event under both the statutes, the respective VAT law. The respective VAT law and service tax law got triggered. Under GST, supply by a restaurant is treated as a composite supply. Since supply of food and service is naturally bundled in the ordinary course of business. Further entry six B of schedule two specifically provides that. Such composite supply shall be treated as supply of service, treated fully as supply of service. Hence, the entire value of invoice shall be treated as value of service and levyable to GST accordingly. So the first thing is any transfer of title in goods delete as supply of goods. Any transfer of right in goods or undivided share in goods without transfer of title, so it's like renting of the goods. Supply of services. Not like renting, yeah, 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 machinery on rent, yeah, it's like renting only. Any transfer of title in goods under an agreement which stipulates that property in goods. Shall pass at a future date upon payment of full consideration as agreed. Drupa Capitals supplied goods on higher purchase to its customers. Optima manufacturer supplies toys to retailers on sale or return basis. Still it is supply of goods only. Transfer of title but upon a condition that is okay. Land and building. Any lease tenancy easement license to occupy land, supply of service. Any lease or letting out of building including a commercial, industrial or residential complex for business. Or commerce wholly or partly, supply of service. Treatment or process can definitely supply of service. Transfer of business assets. Goods forming part of business assets are transferred or disposed of by or under directions of. Person carrying on the business so as no longer to form part of those assets, supply of goods. Goods held or used for business are put to private use or are made available to any person for use. For any purpose other than business by or under directions of person carrying on the business, supply of services. A person manufacturing and selling wooden furniture takes one chair manufactured by him for use at his house. Goods held or used for business are put to private use or are made available to any person for use. For any purpose other than business by or under direction, okay. Goods forming part of assets of any business carrying, carried on by a person who ceases to be a taxable person. Shall be deemed to be supplied by him in the course or furtherance of his business, supply of goods. Immediately before he ceases to be a taxable person, Arun a trader is winding up his business. Any goods left in stock shall be deemed to be supplied by him. Exceptions, business is transferred as a going concern to another person, business is carried on by a personal representative. Who is deemed to be a taxable person, renting of immovable property, supply of services. Construction of complex building, civil structure, et cetera. So this, we have a simple, simple thumb rule. See if the builder has got any consideration before getting the. Certificate of completion from a competent authority. If the builder has got, started to get entire consideration or part consideration even before the completion. Then it is to be treated as supply of services. However. If the builder has fully built the construction, the complex, whatever it is, the apartment or whatever it is. With his own money or definitely not money from, as consideration from the buyer. And then he obtained the certificate of completion also from the competent authority. And then he sold the goods and he received the consideration only after getting the completion certificate. So in that situation, it will be treated as supply of goods. So here, the competent authority is an architect, a chartered engineer, a licensed surveyor of respective local body of the city. Town or village. Okay, temporary transfer or permitting use or enjoyment of any intellectual property, right? Okay, temporary transfer is again services, development, design, programming of software, implementation of software, supply of services. Agreeing to obligation or to refrain from an act or to tolerate our situation or to do an act. So this is again supply of services. Okay, security deposit forfeited in the event of cancellation of tour package by the customer. Okay, supplier of, please refer to detailed discussion on this para of schedule two given at the end of table. Security deposit forfeited in the event of cancellation of tour package, okay. Transfer of right to any use, right to use any goods for any purpose, for cash, for deferred payment. Or in, or on any other valuable consideration, mission given on hire. Composite supplies works contract means a contract for building, construction, fabrication, completion, erection, installation, fitting out. Improvement, modification, repair, maintenance, renovation, alteration or. Commissioning of any immovable property wherein transfer of property in goods is involved in execution of such contract. Transfer of property in goods is involved, okay. Supply by way of or as part of any. Service or in any other manner whatsoever of goods being food or any other human article for human consumption or. Any drink other than alcoholic liquor for human consumption where such supply of service, supply or services for cash. Deferred payment or other valuable consideration, supply of services. Okay, now let us. Go to the next segment, we have completed segment number two as well. Just go to the next segment which is round two of whatever we read yesterday. Person liable to pay GST on GTA service. GTA services are taxable at the following two rates. At rate five percentage at twelve percentage. Five percentage is when the GTA has not taken the input tax credit on goods or services used in supplying GTA service. That can be either of the cases where GTA exercises the option itself pay GST. At the said rate or does not. Exercise the option to pay itself GST at said rate or on services supplied by it. Or it can charge GST at twelve percentage rate where the GST exercises the option to pay GST itself. At the said rate on services supplied by it. In this case, there is no restriction on availing ITC on goods or services used in. Supplying GTA service by GTA. In the following paragraphs, okay, it has been given. Person liable to pay tax under GTA service where recipient is one of the specified recipients. Registered GTA exercises option to pay itself to pay tax. That is, this is. GTA chooses, uh, the GTA chooses to be a forward charge. I will provide the transport service, I myself will pay the tax to the government. So in that, there are two sub-situations, one is twelve percent and another five percent. Here, person is liable to pay GST, here the same GTA is only liable to pay GST. But there is another option when GST says, the GTA says that I will not pay GST. You, the customer, pay GST to the government. So in that case, reverse charge will apply and then the rate will be five percentage. Recipient of GTA service is the person who pays or is liable to pay freight. Uh, for transportation of goods by road in goods carriage located in taxable territory. Where recipient is other than specified recipients, that is unregistered individual. End customer or unregistered casual taxable person, GST will be exempt, okay. Person liable to pay GST on renting of motor vehicles service. Service by way of renting of any motor vehicle designed to carry passengers where the cost of fuel is included in the consideration charged. From their service recipient are taxable at the following two rates. Five percentage provided supplier of services has taken only the limited ITC of input services in the same line of business or. Twelve percentage where the supplier of services opts to pay GST at the said rate. In this case, there is no restriction on availing ITC on goods and services used in supplying. And renting of motor vehicle services, service by the supplier of service. In the following paragraphs, we have explained as to. Who is the person liable to pay tax in each of the following above two rates. Person liable to pay under renting of motor vehicle service, GST is payable at five percentage, supplier is other than body corporate. And then if the recipient is a body corporate, then it is to be done as per reverse charge. However, if the recipient is other than body corporate, the, uh, supplier himself should pay GST. Okay, if the supplier is, is body corporate. Huh, if the supplier, the person driving, providing driving service, motor vehicle service themselves. Are a body corporate, then obviously it is a forward charge. Okay, if supplier is other than body corporate, then it depends on recipient and it falls on recipient also. If the supplier is also not a body corporate, if the recipient is also not a body corporate, then again supplier has to pay GST. Five percentage and then again limitations is applicable on availing ITC if you go for five percentage. Where GST is payable at twelve percentage, then there is no restriction in, I mean GST, so you yourself have to. Hmm, pay GST as per forward charge. Okay, next. Hmm pay GST as per forward charge, okay, next. Now there may, it is important to note here that any service placed under R C M, the supplier shall not charge any tax from the service recipient. As this is the settled procedure under R C M. Thus, the notification specifies that R C M is applicable here only when the supplier does not issue an invoice charging GST at. Twelve percentage from the service recipient, okay, now there may arise a doubt as to whether R C M is applicable on services of. Renting of motor vehicle designed to carry passengers or service of transportation of passengers. It is clarified that there is a clear distinction between the two services which is has under, two services fall under two different headings in the tariff. Service of renting of motor vehicles designed to carry passengers covers renting of motor vehicles for transportation of passengers for a period of time. Where the renter defines how and when the vehicles will be operated, determining schedules, routes and other operational considerations. Passenger transport services covers passenger transport services over predetermined routes on predetermined schedules. Accordingly, where the body corporate hires the motor vehicle for a period of time. During which the motor vehicle shall be at the disposal of the body corporate, the service would fall under services of renting of motor vehicle designed to carry passengers. And the body corporates shall be liable to pay GST on the same under R C M. Thus, a reverse charge would apply on act of renting of vehicles by body corporate and in such case. It is for the body corporate to use it in the manner as it likes subject to agreement with the person providing vehicle on rent. However, where the body corporate avails passenger transport service for specified journeys, voyages and does not. Take vehicle on rent for any particular period of time, the service would fall under passenger transport service. And the body corporate shall not be liable to pay GST as per R C M, okay, taxability of remuneration paid to the director. In order to determine the levability of tax on the remuneration paid to directors, we must need to ascertain whether. The director is an employee of the company or not, following two situations are possible. Services provided by and by the independent directors or those directors by whatever name called who are not employees of the set companies to such. Company. Against remuneration as the consideration for the set services are clearly outside the scope of schedule three of the CGST Act. And are therefore taxable. As seen in the table given above illustrating the reverse charge services. Such remuneration paid to the directors in the is taxable in the hands of the company on reverse charge basis. In case where it is asserted that a director irrespective of name and designation is an employee. Next step would be to examine whether all the activities performed by the director or in the course. Of employer-employee relation or is there any element of contract for service. The part of directors' remuneration which are declared as salaries in the books of a company are subject to tedious under section one ninety-two. Of the Income Tax Act and are not taxable being consideration for services by an employee to the employer in the course or. Course of or in relation to his employment in terms of para one of schedule three. Further, the part of the employee director's remuneration which is declared separately other than salaries in the company's accounts. And is subject to tedious under section one ninety-four J of the Income Tax Act as fees for professional or technical services. Are treated as consideration for providing such services which are outside the scope of schedule three and is therefore taxable. Besides, as already discussed, the recipient of the said services. That is the company is liable to discharge the applicable GST on it on reverse charge basis. Besides, as already the recipient of the services, okay. Tax on services supplied by director of a company in his personal capacity. Such as renting of immovable property to the company or body corporate, not payable under reverse charge mechanism. Tax on services supplied by director of a company or body corporate to the company or the body corporate is. Payable by the company or body corporate under reverse charge mechanism. It is clarified that services supplied by a director of a company or body corporate to the company. Or body corporate. Company or body corporate to the company or body corporate in his private or personal capacity such as services supplied. By way of renting of immovable property are not taxable under R C M. Only those services supplied by director of a company or body corporate which are supplied by him or in the capacity as. Director of that company shall be taxed under R C M, okay. Sindhu Transporters and Unregistered Goods or Goods Transport Sir, Goods Transport Agency provides the services of. Transportation of goods by road to Bindusar Manufacturers registered under GST, GST is payable by. Transporter is an unregistered GTA and the recipient is a registered person, therefore. GST is to be paid by uh reverse charge under reverse charged by Bindusar Manufacturers. At the rate five percentage because reverse charge will come, so twelve percent need not be there, so twelve percent will come only if it is a forward charge case. Right, Neelanchal Chamber of Commerce organized a business summit, Saffal Private Limited. A manufacturer of ready-made garments sponsored the summit and paid a sponsorship. Fee of one lakh twenty thousand to Neelanchal Chamber of Commerce, Mister Ghathboli. An independent director of Saffal Private Limited provided the services worth fifty thousand to the company. The value on which Saffal Private Limited is liable to pay GST is fifty thousand is for sure. One lakh twenty thousand. Sponsored the summit and paid a sponsorship fee, Neelanchal Chamber of Commerce need not be a registered person, it's like not a body corporate. The person who availed that sponsorship service is body corporate, so therefore both will be taxed as per R C M. At least that's what I think, so my answer is one lakh seventy thousand, so if you think if there is any other answer, let me know in the comment section. So we have completed round two of whatever we read yesterday, now we can proceed. Today's quota, three point thirty-fourth page number to maybe five to six pages. Tax payable by e-commerce operator on notified services. E-commerce operator is any person who owns, operates, manages. An electronic platform for supply of goods, services or both. Sometimes e-commerce operator in itself supplies the goods or services or both through its electronic portal. However, many a times the product or services displayed on the electronic portal are actually supplied by. Some other person to the consumer. When a consumer places an order for a particular product or service on its electronic portal. The actual supplier supplies the selected product or service to the consumer. The price or consideration for the product or service is collected by the e-commerce operator from the consumer. And passed on to the actual supplier after the deduction of commission by the e-commerce operator. The government may on the recommendations of the GST council notify specific categories of services. The tax on supplies of which shall be paid by the e-commerce operator if such services are supplied through it. Such services shall be notified on the recommendations of the GST council. Notification number seventeen of two thousand seventeen dated twenty eight six two thousand seventeen, notification number fourteen of two thousand seventeen dated twenty eight six two thousand seventeen. As amended, has notified the following categories of services supplied through e-commerce operator for operator for. This purpose, services by way of transportation of passengers by radio taxi, motor cab. Maxi cab, motorcycle or any other motor vehicle except omnibus, so I think fairly this Uber, Ola, all this blue smart. I think that will be covered under this, services by way of transportation of passengers by an omnibus. Except where the person supplying such service through E C O is a company. Okay, so this is like this red bus, Abhi bus, all those things, but if the. Bus agency is also a company, I don't think it will cover, it will be covered under this. Services by way of providing accommodation in hotels, inns, guest houses, clubs, campsites or other commercial places meant for. Residential or lodging purposes, except where the person supplying such service through e-commerce operator is liable for registration under. Section twenty-two subsection one, again, this is for O U, make my trip, I think. Services by way of housekeeping such as plumbing, carpeting, et cetera. Where the, except where the person supplying such service through e-commerce operator is liable for registration, okay. Supply of restaurant service other than services supplied by restaurant, eating joints located at specific, specified premises. The tax on services by way of transportation of passengers by an omnibus provided by a company through E C O. Is not payable by E C O, it will be payable by the company itself, okay. Meaning of various terms, radio taxi. Means a taxi including a radio cab by whatever name called which is in two-way radio communication with a central control office. And is enabled for tracking using G P S or G P R S. Okay, maxi cab means any motor vehicle constructed or adapted to carry more than six passengers but not more than. Twelve passengers excluding the driver for hire or reward, motor cab means. Any motor vehicle constructed or adapted to carry not more than six passengers excluding the driver for hire or reward. Motor car means any motor vehicle other than a transport vehicle. Omnibus, road roller, tractor, motorcycle or invalid carriage. Omnibus means any motor vehicle constructed or adapted to carry more than six passengers, six persons excluding the driver. Specified premises would mean premises providing hotel accommodation service. Having declared a tariff of any unit of accommodation above seven thousand five hundred per unit. Per day or equivalent, so here, supply of restaurant service other than services supplied by. Restaurant located at specified premises, so accommodation service along with restaurant service. Okay, company means a company incorporated under the Companies Act two thousand thirteen or any previous company law. It is important to note here that the above provision shall apply only in case of supply of services, okay. Tax on above services supplied through E C O shall be paid by the E C O. All provisions of CGST I G S T Act shall apply to such E C O as if he is the supplier. Liable for paying the tax in relation to the supply of above services. E C O may on services provided under, I mean on services notified under section nine subsection five. Including on restaurant service provided through. E C O pay GST by furnishing the details in form G S T R three B reporting them as outward taxable supplies. In this regard, following issues have been clarified, E C S not to collect T C, E C Os not to collect T C S in respect of. Restaurant services so notified. E C Os will no longer be required to collect tax collected at source. And file form G S T R eight in respect of restaurant services on which it pays tax in rest in terms of section nine subsection five. E C Os not required to take separate registration for paying tax on restaurant service supplied through them. E C Os are already registered in accordance with rule eight as supplier of their own goods or services. There would be no mandatory requirement of taking separate registration by E C Os. For payment of tax on restaurant service under section nine subsection five. E C O to pay tax on rest any restaurant services supplied through them. E C Os will be liable to pay GST on any restaurant service supplied through them, including services supplied by an unregistered person, okay. Supply of restaurant services to be included in aggregate turnover of person supplying restaurant services through E C O. It is clarified that the aggregate turnover of person supplying restaurant service through E C Os. Shall be computed in accordance with the definition of aggregate turnover under section two subsection five. Sorry, two clause six and shall include the aggregate value of supplies made by the restaurant through E C Os. Accordingly, for threshold consideration or any other purpose of in the CGST Act. The person providing restaurant service through E C O shall account for such services in his aggregate turnover. Okay, restaurant services provided through E C O not to be considered as inward supply for E C Os liable to R C M. E C Os are not the recipient of restaurant service supplied through them. Since these are not input services of E C O, these are not to be reported as inward supply in form G S T R three B. Reversal of proportionate I T C on input goods and services not required by E C U. E C Os provide their own services as an electronic platform and as an intermediary for which it would acquire inputs. Or input services on which E C Os avail input tax credit, the E C O charges, commission, fee, et cetera. For the services it provides, the I T C is utilized by the E C O. For payment of GST on services provided by E C O on its own account, say to a restaurant. The situation in this regard remains unchanged even after E C O is made liable to pay tax on restaurant service. E C O would be eligible to I T C as before. Accordingly, it is clarified that E C O shall not be required to reverse I T C on account of restaurant services. On which it pays GST in terms of section nine subsection five. It may also be noted noted that on restaurant service, E C O shall pay the entire GST liability in cash. No I T C could be utilized for payment of GST on restaurant service supplied through the e-commerce operator. Okay, GST to be paid by the supplier on services not notified under section nine subsection five of CGST Act. But supplied through e-commerce operator, in respect of supplies not notified under section nine subsection five. But supplied through the e-commerce operator, the liability to pay GST continues on such supplier. And e-commerce operator shall continue to deposit T C S on such supplies. Okay, eighth point, e-commerce operator to raise invoice in respect of restaurant service supplied through e-commerce operator. The invoice in respect of restaurant service supplied through e-commerce operator under section nine. Subsection five will be issued by e-commerce operator. So, we will stop with this e-commerce operator segment with this page. Billing in case of restaurant service and goods or services other than restaurant service being sold by. A restaurant to a customer under the same order. That can be a situation where restaurant service and goods or services other than restaurant service are sold by a restaurant. To a customer under the same order, the question arises as to who shall be liable for raising invoices in such cases. Considering that liability to pay GST on supplies other than restaurant service through the E C O. The other compliances under the GST Act including issuance of invoice to customer. Continues to lie with the respective suppliers and e-commerce being liable to. Liable only to collect tax at source on such supplies. It is advisable that e-commerce raises separate bill on restaurant service. In such cases where E C O provides other supplies to a customer under the same order. Person liable to pay GST for above specified services when supplied through e-commerce operator is. If the e-commerce is operator is located in taxable territory, person liable to pay tax is the e-commerce operator. If the e-commerce operator does not have physical presence in the taxable territory. Person liable to pay taxes the person representing the e-commerce operator. If the e-commerce operator has neither the physical presence nor any representative in the taxable territory. A person liable to pay tax is the person appointed by the e-commerce operator for the purpose of paying the tax, now. This is a solid segment under this chapter. The moment we started this e-commerce operator segment. This page was pretty much okay because I was able to find out what are they at least talking about, they are talking about Uber services, Ola services and then O U, make my trip and everything. And then I think they went to uh this service like um Swiggy, Sumato, all those things. Because it's talking about restaurant service, so it has to be that. So I was wondering, okay, so until page number thirty-four, it was quite clear, page number thirty-five, nothing is there. So I was wondering, okay, so until page number thirty-four, it was quite clear, page number thirty-five, nothing is there, just meaning and definitions they have given. This page number thirty-six and thirty-seven, I was absolutely, uh there, there are lots of. Abbreviations and lots of new terms that are given for which we don't have, we have not been primed. So, first of all, we didn't know what is this tax collected at source concept under GST, so that is a point here. And then supply of restaurant service, I don't know what is a restaurant service, okay, so. I have a lot of open loops in these three pages, thirty-six, thirty-seven and thirty-eight. I have lots of open loops, I, I agree to it. This portion we have already read at the beginning of this chapter. So, this is kind of a repeat segment, but definitely this chap, page number thirty-six, thirty-seven and thirty-eight, the half of that page. I'm, I'm as new to it as you are probably. So on that note, anyway, this is not something that we are going through for the first time. Ever since we started revising, you know, studying GST, many pages, round one, round two, it looked like this only, but. Slowly the clarity started to happen after we went through round three, round four and round five. So most likely, I expect us to get some better clarity, maybe after round three or round four. So I asked you to not panic or anything, stick with me, let us do this together, if you have been traveling with me until here, great. Let us continue doing that, this, after this tomorrow, we will read this classification portion, that should be. Pretty manageable only, I hope at least. So on that note, let us wrap up today's study session, which is page number thirty-four to thirty-eight we read today. Dated. I will see you tomorrow and we will do study session twenty-three together. Thank you and bye-bye.